All right, welcome to this evening's meeting. I see everybody spaced out, so that's good. Everybody has their mask. I really appreciate y'all doing that. We're gonna have our invocation. Well, we'll have a moment of silence. I don't see any preachers here. So we'll have a moment of silence and we'll follow that up with the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, commissioners, we're getting some feedback from one of your open mics. So if you would, place your phones or laptops on mute, please. All right, Madam Clerk.
All the commissioners present.
Oh, let's have roll call. Commissioner Franklin Warner.
Present.
Commissioner Gregory.
Present.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Madam Clerk, everyone's present.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 19, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. The first order of business tonight is adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or amendments?
All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Um, I apologize. There's a lot of noise, Mr. Chairman. I'm in the office and I can hear you louder outside than I can through the system. We can't hear Ms. Brenda. I can't. I hear her, I hear me echoing louder than I can hear Ms. Brenda.
Okay, well, she just, and Ms. Brenda, I guess, tried to speak louder. Hopefully they had to take care of the problem. But the request at present is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Do you want to make sure she?
I would like to, um, can we, are we gonna, I wanna remove something from the consent?
Okay, yeah, that's what we asked earlier. I apologize again, you did say you did not, was not able to hear. Is there any changes, modifications, or deletions? Commissioner Warner.
Okay. Uh, item six, separate, and seven, just for quick questions, not long.
Okay, so you want to remove items six and seven, Resolution 2020-80, request permission to accept donated supplies for law enforcement, and the Resolution 2020-81, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners Clayton County to terminate memorandum of understanding with Freeman Mathis and Gary. And you want them to be on the regular agenda, correct?
Yes, just on a regular agenda for a quick question, that's all. And I don't know if they could fix it, but I can hear you, Mr. Chairman, but again, I hear everything else loud out there. I don't know if the other commissioners are having the same difficulties.
Now, where is she here? Check the hallway and see if there's anybody out there talking. All right, so that's the motion by Commissioner Greg, uh, I'm sorry, Franklin Warner. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous, are there any others? All right, with that being said, a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed.
Can you find out?
It's unanimous.
Can you find out if Commissioner?
I have a technical difference.
And, and, and Hamburg, can you hear you okay?
Commissioner Gregory and Hamburg, are you hearing us okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
No, yeah, just checking to make sure that you can hear us.
Got you.
Okay, good.
There is something in the background somewhere, but I can see it here, but I do hear something else.
Does somebody have a phone and a computer?
Okay, we don't know where the noise is coming from, but Director Brook is gonna check into it. We'll proceed on. Next is public comment, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, because we are using Zoom, we're not able to put the time on the screen. So I have a couple of devices here that's gonna help us with the three-minute time limit, which I hope I do right. I'm gonna place this up here for your viewing. We're gonna start with Frances Wetherspoon, Wetherspoon.
Hi, I'm Frances Wetherspoon, and I am the next-door neighbor of the Rock Park. And so...
Now ma'am, are you speaking just on public comment, or we having public hearings for the zoning requests?
Are you speaking, are you wanting to speak for the zoning requests, or just speak in general? Well, as you know, I don't know what I'm doing. Um, so I'm not sure when I need to speak. My biggest concern is that they say there were meetings and things, and there weren't, not anything I was invited to.
Although you have a right to speak to us now, but if you would like, that would...
I'll still get a chance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Sandeep Gumpa, Goopa, I apologize if I did not say that right, sir. And again, anybody who wants to speak for the, in general, your comments are definitely welcome. If you are here to speak on a zoning hearing, that will happen at the end of the agenda.
Uh, I'm here, supposed to be my last, Mr. Loeb should be here, but he's not, uh, not come today. So I think so that's the final decision today, that's why I'm here, because he cannot come today.
And you want to speak about?
Speak about the nozzard.
The zoning.
The zoning?
Yes.
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, you can wait till the zoning cases come up, and then we will call you up to speak on that.
Sure, thank you, sir.
Yes. Okay, Taryn Canyon? Okay, that's you, thank you. Jeffrey Edwards. Jeffrey Edwards, Saint Zoner here. Okay, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chair, Board members. It's been a minute. I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate Emergency Services and your leadership chairman on the COVID-19 response. That was an unprecedented time, and I think that you got us in the right direction as we are still functioning body. As I pass these, uh, this information out, I would like to elaborate on a few things. Uh, the Development Authority did a wonderful job in helping small businesses under the leadership of Chairman Vincent and Regina Delozen, of course, Erica Rocco Wills. The initial grant was established only for unincorporated Clayton County businesses, and of course, it was expanded to include the cities. So therefore, the cities took a lot of funding away from the initial grant, and I would like to encourage the boards to try to attempt to find some more funding as we move forward on this epidemic crisis that we're in, so that our shopping centers will not become blighted. So I have a genuine concern. There are several pictures that the citizens are inquiring about that appear to be sophisticated campaign signs. The state has directed me to inform the board, and the board has to make a determination if these are compromised and questionable abuse of power as far as the citizens' funding. Because one, the sign on the left...
Sir, what board did they address you, tell you to address?
The Ethics Board, Ethics Board.
Okay.
Uh, for the state.
But you're bringing it to us?
Yes, they told me you have to clarify.
We gotta do what?
You have to clarify, because it could be in the commissioner's budget, or it could be an abuse of funding. So you have to clarify, like, for example...
Did you ask the open records request for any of that?
Yes, I did. And because of the, that we are in a political season, I thought felt the urgency to bring it to the board's attention. If you notice the picture on the left, it says Engage Clayton. I assume that Nickelworks had an MOU with the county, and that was their particular project. And this, this particular picture on the left does not have a county seal. The particular picture on the right is a fixed to the integration fence, and that appeared to be a campaign header for the Commissioner Franklin Warner, and it's sealed. So the citizens are questioning, do we pay for these signs, the amount, and because they are indefinite, they don't have an end date? So the board must make a determination if this is an abuse of camp, uh, of citizens' funding, because it is not directed to a particular event with the end date. This seemed to be a permanent advertisement. Because to my understanding, the contract on Engage Clayton Initiative is, uh, is with Nickelworks, and not with a particular board member, I thought it was a countywide initiative.
Sorry, your time is up, sir.
Yes, sir. So is there any possible way that we can get clarification on these issues?
Thank you, sir, we'll take a look at them.
Thank you.
I'll take a look at them. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now consider the consent items minus number six and seven.
All right.
Okay, you said we will consider the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, minus number six and seven.
Minus, okay, that's what I got. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm a little bit there.
Second.
All right, it's approved by Commissioner Franklin Warner and seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, just a quick point of privilege for one of the items. Um, when we made the appointment to the board that both you and Vice Chair serve on, I'd asked the question about where does your, your recommended person or nominee reside, what district? And it was brought to my attention that they may reside, or they do reside, in a different district. And I just wanna put on record that, with that information, and I definitely approve of it. I know that we have not formally adopted the entire Roberts Rule's order, so I'm not able to officially amend that, um, that vote. But I stated during the meeting that I had concerns about making sure there was equity, and I just wanted it to be on record that I did get the answer to the question, thanks to the staff.
Thank you.
Next item is item number six, which is Resolution 2020-80, request permission to accept donated supplies for law enforcement use.
Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board. I have a Resolution 2020-80, which is a resolution authorizing the county to accept a donation of supplies to Clayton County Police Department, to authorize the chairman to accept a donation on behalf of the Clayton County, and to execute any documents necessary and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution to provide an effective date of the resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Davis makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Franklin Warner, second the motion, are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, next.
The next item is item number seven, which is Resolution 2020-81, where Clayton County to terminate the memorandum of understanding with Freeman Mathis and Gary LLP.
Um, good evening, again, I have Resolution 2020-81, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County to terminate the memorandum of understanding, parentheses MOU, in parentheses with Freeman Mathis and Gary LLP for the provision of legal services for Staff Attorney's Office to authorize the chairman or his designated to execute, I should say, to terminate the MOU as required under the terms of the MOU, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense all as may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, next.
The next item is Resolution 2020-86.
Yes, I have Resolution 2020-86, which is a resolution to rescind the May 5, 2020 unanimous motion to eschew the recommendation award for RFP 19-277 for insurance brokerage consulting services for employee benefits for Clayton County, Georgia, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second, any questions? I have one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
This is for, uh, Mr. Reed. Because time is of the essence, and I believe that there was nothing wrong with the RFP that went out. If we rescind this, could I, in this meeting, turn around and make a motion to approve this company?
Uh, you can make a motion to, uh, make an emergency motion, I suppose, to add an item, which would be the approval of the recommendation for RFP 19-277. I would say, under the board's regulations, that you'd have to outline what the emergency would be. But otherwise, um, you could do so.
All right, Mr. CEO. We spoke about the urgency in this project and the company, not project, but the insurance aspect of it. Does it, in your opinion, constitute a need for us to go ahead and get it approved during this meeting?
Yes, sir. After speaking with Central Service Director and HR Director, based upon our open enrollment period and our ability to go through, I guess, the, um, the work processes in order to get information out to our respective employees and retirees, they need this, this time to actually get information out to the employees. And if there is a change, again, to will of the board, then we're gonna be pressed upon time to either extend the present contract with our present vendor, or, again, make some other additional changes in our open enrollment period.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, um, statements. Of the reason that this needs to be rescinded is because of the fact that, um, there was some information that was not readily available at the time that we approved this award for bid, I mean, award for contract. And unfortunately, it's a ethics question because of the fact that it's brought to my attention that Brown Financial Group, which is actually subcontractor, made a donation online to my campaign during the RFP process. And so unfortunately, that does violate the RFP process and the ethics rules. But at the end of the day, that's why I need to have this recused, I mean, recuse myself from it. And just to put it on record, all funds have been returned, once it's been brought to my attention of the fact that this was a subcontractor. The award of bid was provided to Marsh, but Brown Financial Services is listed as a subcontractor.
Any other statements, comments? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Madam Clerk, I'd like to, at this pole, at this point, make a emergency motion to award Marsh and McLenon Agency, the RFP has originally awarded 19-277. The emergency being a matter of time and convenience, especially for our employees as outlined by Mr. Stanford, who reiterated the need for re, uh, reappointing or restating that Marsh and McLenon be appointed to the, be awarded the contract. Is there, I offer that in the form of motion, is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second, are there any questions?
Uh, I have a...
Commissioner Hamburg.
Attorney, is there, um, are we violating anything with the vote on this, Chuck?
Mr. Reed.
I would not be comfortable stating that giving an opinion at this point without having all the facts to say that you are violating something. The question that was posed is, do your parliamentary procedure allow you to bring this matter before the board in this matter? If there are any other irregularities or anything like that, I'm not comfortable being able to opine on that at this particular point.
Well, I, I just recall some years ago, when we were picking a project manager, and something came up of an ethical issue, and it ended up actually canceling the agreement we had with the top runner for that, for that contract.
I will say that the county ordinance does provide that there are certain ramifications for violations of the bid process, including ethics issues. There is a consequence for that, but I don't have enough facts here at this present moment to, um, to give you an opinion officially on that right now as to whether this particular entity has in fact conducted, had in fact violated the ethics rules.
Now, we are talking about awarding this to the prime, and that's not Brown, the subcontract, the sub, uh, the sub on the, on the, uh, on the, on the contract. So we're talking about Marsh and McLenon Agency. Brown was the one who made the contribution.
That's correct, which is the reason why I'm not, uh, don't feel that it's appropriate at this point to give you an opinion as to whether the actions of that subcontractor without knowing more can be imputed to the, uh, to impute it to the prime. All I will say is that as far as the process of bringing them back on, you can bring that, and that there is a penalty if there is an ethics violation or a, um, a bid violation during the, um, the RFP process. But to say right now...
I don't like to state.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know we're stuck on toes.
I was gonna say, to make that determination right now without having all the facts, I don't think would be appropriate.
Commissioner Franklin Warner, you have something? You were gonna make a comment.
No, I actually don't. I'm gonna leave it alone and let the board make a decision. I've stated what I need to state. Um, I am a person of high ethics, especially one with a degree in accounting. We're even more accountable than most of us, and with one that has worked in the industry, so that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes.
On the vote that we just took, Commissioner Warner made the motion, and Commissioner Davis seconded, but during her statement, she said she recused herself, recused herself.
No, from the, if they choose to vote again. Let me clarify that.
Yeah.
My statement was referring to the fact that I need to recuse myself no matter, well, let me just say this. The board could do whatever they, whatever you all choose to do as a majority. I have to make sure that I do what I am bound to do, um, with my fiduciary responsibility as a commissioner. That's all, and that's why this is brought before the board today.
So you would be recusing yourself from the emergency vote and not from the previous vote?
That is correct.
If there's a vote on emergency vote?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We already moved and seconded that.
Yeah, but it can always be, uh, modified. So to Mr. Reed's point, if it was delayed by two weeks till the next meeting, what kind of impact would that have?
Again, Chairman, I believe, um, to provide perspective to the question, the question to bring it forth as an emergency that will have impact on our timeline as it pertains to onboarding any vendor if there is a delay, whether or not we're keeping the present vendor or we're awarding this present vendor, then we don't have that delay, that period of time. But if we have to go back out and rebid the process, then we know without a degree of certainty that that will delay our process in being able to have our open enrollment done in a timely manner.
And just to reiterate again, Mr. Reed, you said that there is a penalty should something not be proper in order.
That's correct, and that could be that they would be disqualified from being a candidate for an award. That it would include other things, but that is one of the consequences.
And I'm not comfortable.
Okay. All right. And if it is... Let me think through this, 'cause I see how it's gonna go. Okay, we'll just go ahead and take a, take a vote on it. All right, any other questions? Comments? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I abstain.
Those opposed?
No, I'm, I'm voting for it, Chair, Mr. Reed.
Okay, so it's...
Can you clarify what the vote is? The vote is for rescension, correct?
No, we already voted on that.
Okay, so what are you voting for now?
We're voting on, I, I made emergency motion to award Lennon and Marsh, or Marsh and McLenon Agency, the RFP award.
Okay, now you said, Mr. Chairman, that you can make changes, so what are you actually voting on? Are you voting on the award as it's presented, or with augmentations?
Commissioner Warner, my motion is to bring back the same as, the same resolution, but after it's been rescinded, we'd already rescinded it. Now, my motion is to award them under emergency motion, the same company, because it was the, the sub that donated to your campaign, and we will work through whatever else we need to work through, and as Mr. Reed mentioned, that there are some consequences to anything we might find down the road. But I'm comfortable with making emergency motion, because we need to get this, this, uh, award, award it, and, and start dealing with it, because it deals with our employees.
Now, we've had the vote.
I abstain.
Move on.
Okay, so it's three to one, Commissioner Hamburg, opposed. There's one abstention from Commissioner Franklin Warner. I'm sorry, say again?
I abstain from the vote.
Oh, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Is that Gregory?
There's three, oh, two abstentions. Does she need to qualify or quantify her, um, abstention?
If she's abstaining for cause, then she should state what that cause is.
You abstaining for cause, Commissioner Hamburg?
Well, I'm not comfortable with that. I don't know what the findings might be and all, so since I'm not comfortable with that, I can't vote. I don't feel comfortable voting yea or nay.
Is that an acceptable abstention? As opposed to just voting no?
That doesn't seem to fall within what qualifies cause. Usually you have like a business relationship, or if there's some sort of issue... Usually you have like a business relationship or if there's some sort of issue with-
Mr. Reed, I may have to ask you this question.
Commissioner, Commissioner Franklin, let me get, let me allow him to finish his comment before you, before you cut in.
I can't, I'm sorry, I apologize.
What, what I was saying, I'll speak a little louder, I was saying that typically for, for, for cause would be things like you have a business relationship or anticipate going into a business relationship with a party where you have some sort of conflict of interest that can be one basis for, for abstention. But if that's... I don't know if there's enough that she's provided at this point to say that that falls for cause.
Commissioner Hambrick? Were you clear on this statement?
Okay, no, I was just gonna say, what about the unknown, which is the reason I'm-
But we don't know what the unknown may be down the road.
I know, that's what, that's my problem.
But you-
That's my problem with it.
But you're abstaining on something that's possible as opposed to no.
I vote nay, nay.
Thank you. Commissioner Warner, did you have anything else?
Commissioner Warner recused herself.
Chair, I just wanna say, you know, I, I, I feel like Commissioner Hambrick have a little bit of concern, but I recognize that we've gotta get our employees in the urgency of this, so, you know, of course, I'm voting yea, yea for this because we don't want to impact employees anymore, you know, during this time especially.
Okay. All right, well, two abstentions and, um, no, one abstention, one no, Commissioner Hambrick, and three yes. This approved, next.
The next are board appointments.
All right, next appointment is Green Space Land Trust Board Appointments. This is to appoint four new members to the board, the board of which the chairman and vice chairman are also members of. This board consists of two standing members, four members at large. These members serve for four-year terms, which will begin on May fifth, 2020, and will expire May fifth, 2024. And there are two positions left on this board, is that correct? All right, so, is there a motion for one of these seats? Anybody have a recommendation? Green Space Board.
I did not get a confirmation back, but I know there's someone, if we can hold one of these, we have someone very interested in Green Space, but I just didn't get a call back.
Okay. Anybody have any other motion? Otherwise, we'll just hold both of them till next meeting. All right, Madam Clerk, just hold both of those. Next, board appointments to the Veterans Advisory Board, District One, Kenneth Gilmore, term expires on June sixth, 2020.
Sure, motion to reappoint Mr. Kenneth Gilmore.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is also Veterans Advisory Board, District Two, Clarence Bruno, term will expire on June sixth, 2020. Any recommendation by District Two Commissioner?
Uh, yes, I would like to reappoint, uh, Mr. Clarence Bruno.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved to second by Commissioner Davis. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is also Veterans Advisory Board, District Three, Paul Winfrey, term expires on June sixth, 2020. Any recommendation by District Three Commissioner?
Yes, sir, I do recommend that Mr. Paul Winfrey, um, be reappointed to that board.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Who made the second?
Hambrick.
Commissioner Hambrick. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Last board appointment for Veterans Advisory Board, District Four. It will begin on June sixth, 2020, and will expire June sixth of twenty twenty-four. There is currently nobody in this position.
I wish to hold that till next meeting.
All right. Madam Clerk, we will hold that till next meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gregory.
Before we go into the zoning hearing, I would like to, um, ask if you and the COO can find out what's going on with the, um, Land Bank Award. I've talked to a couple people who said, you know, they've been, I know they haven't been meeting and we know the last couple months has been COVID, but from what I understand, they have not been meeting. I have a couple subdivisions that the Land Bank has purchased some lots in their community and, and they're trying to figure out what's going on. I don't know why they bought those lots, but anyway, we just need to kinda find out what's going on with them.
Yeah, I know exactly what's going on. I will, uh, give you a call on tomorrow and, uh, will give you a status.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Next is BOC eleven, nineteen eleven, dash zero zero three, CUP, to allow convenience store.
The applicant is requesting a new guest, a new convenience store within an existing shopping plaza. The shopping plaza is, is the shops at North Ark. Property is currently zoned GB, general business, located at eighteen twenty North Ark Road, which is, the parcel ID is identified on the agenda. The subject property is approximately two point zero eight acres of land with frontage on Dixon Industrial Boulevard at two hundred twenty-nine feet and on North Ark Road, two hundred forty feet of frontage. The subject property is also located within the Highway one thirty-eight overlay district. This is a decision-only request. The, um, staff recommendation was, and ZAG recommendations for approval.
Okay, you said this is for decision-only?
That's correct.
Commissioner Davis?
Um, I've spoken to many folks in that community and also to ZAG had a lot of issues with this, so I'm moving that we deny this motion.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Before we go into the next one, I need to read the public hearing for zoning. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, speakers will be expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item should have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Holding of signs, clapping, or yelling to show support or against will not be permitted. The next item is H, which is rezoning nineteen zero six dash zero zero twenty-two. The applicant is requesting a rezon MX to MX one for an event center.
The applicant for this case is Talua King Gunti, is requesting a rezoning from mixed use MX to MXI for a special events center within an existing building. The proposed location is located at five twenty-one Flint Trail in Jonesboro, Georgia. Parcel ID is identified on the agenda. The property is approximately one point three acres of land, has a hundred and thirty-five, hundred thirty-five point six feet of frontage on Flint Trail Road. The staff is in on a change recommendation of withdrawal on this particular application. The zoning advisory group recommendation was for denial. The change recommendation for withdrawal is due to the recent text amendment we had on special event facilities. That text amendment alleviated the need for this rezoning, but there is a companion case on this agenda for a conditional use permit that will address this particular use within the existing zoning of mixed use as it's currently zoned now, but the rezoning is no longer needed due to the, the text amendment that was adopted in March.
Is the applicant present? Yes, please come forward. Please take the podium, state your name and county residence and also how many minutes in rebuttal would you like to reserve at the end? So, you get ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
No, no, no. No, you're gonna make your comments and then I'm gonna ask if anybody wants to speak in favor. So, if you take ten minutes, you're gonna cut out anybody who wants to speak in favor. Usually, most people ask for two minutes to be in reserve, so if anybody speaks out against it at the end, then you can come back up for two minutes and, and have a rebuttal remark. Is that what you like to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, this particular, um, item that's for you has actually been requested to be withdrawn because there's no need for rezoning because the current or proposed use is allowed within this particular zoning, so it may be more appropriate to ask if they're okay with withdrawing this rezoning because it's not necessary?
So, they can do it anyway?
They can do it if you grant the next one, which is the conditional use permit.
Okay, are you good with, uh, withdrawing this one?
Yes, we are.
All right, so I will, Commissioner Davis, you accept, I guess you have to accept or put in a motion that you're okay? With the withdrawal?
Oh, that's, then that's in a motion or I thought that's just accepted?
Well, we have to accept it as a board, I would think that would have to come in the form of a motion.
Okay, so I put, I put forth the motion that we accept, uh, their approval to withdraw.
And I'll second the mo-, I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Don't go nowhere, I think you're second part, so, Madam Span.
Yes, the companion item on the agenda is CUP one nine zero eight, zero zero three zero. The applicant is Talua King Gunti, is requesting a conditional use permit for a special events center. The proposed, the property is located at five twenty-one Flint Trail. The property is currently zoned MX, mixed use. The, uh, property has, is located on one point three acres of land and has approximately a hundred thirty-five feet of frontage on Flint Trail. Staff recommendation is for approval, conditional, ZAG recommendation is for denial. There are two conditions that staff have recommended with this request.
Can you give me that number again?
The case number that I'm sounding, that is sounding was CUP one nine zero eight, zero zero three zero.
Okay, if you have any opening remarks or remarks in general, now would be the time to, to speak.
Well, um, Mistress, Mr. Gunti, got your small thoughts? We just wanna extend our thanks and appreciation for their consideration for rezoning, uh, our property so we can carry on with the business, that I think is gonna be beneficial to, uh, the community. Thank you for that.
Yes, Talua King Gunti, uh, we are asking that-
Can you speak more into the mic, ma'am?
Okay, Talua King Gunti, we are asking that you guys can consider the conditional use permit because we feel that it would be beneficial for the community, the event center. That's what we are requesting, if you guys can consider that, thank you.
Okay, so, don't go anywhere, just, uh, take a seat right behind you. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor of the request? Anyone like to speak in opposition to it? Anybody opposed to the applicant's request? Okay. Commissioner Davis?
After speaking with staff and with, uh, the ZAG board, we've got to move to deny. Got motion to deny to go along with ZAG's recommendations.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions? Hearing, hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. First one, first one passed, second one did not. So, you're still not allowed to do so.
Okay.
So, we're kind of a little baffled here as to, you know, the procedures. Now, uh, which one passed and which one was denied?
One was, was withdrawn, so there was no need for it. The one that, that, uh, what was it, the zoning?
Zoning change, yes.
Was turned down.
Okay.
So, you're not able to do, to, to put your, uh, your senator.
The CUP is turned down.
Get with Ms. Span and she'll explain to you everything out there.
Okay, so what would I say, what can we do because we are invested in our building, we've been for a year, we haven't done anything. It was like an abandoned building, so we tried to do the best we could. They said if we can, you know, make sure we have an event, not doing the daycare hours, we also plan to do that. We asked if we can give a facelift, we also did that. So, what else can we do? We're trying to invest, we're trying to develop in a way, so what can we do? That's why I asked the question the last time, do we expect us to have an abandoned building, then to uplift the building to invest in something? What you guys want us to do? Because for a year we paid mortgage, we haven't done anything going into two years. We've been coming here, they've been suspending, what can we do?
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, I hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
Please talk to your district commissioner, Mr. Davis, and, uh, to Madeline, and hopefully they can come up with a viable solution for you. So, thank you.
Okay, one more question, do we have to come back here?
It depends on, there's a different use for it. If you wanna do something that's not properly zoned, then you will have to go through the process again.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, I mean, we seem as, it seemed as if to say we were, uh, we are baffled because we were given the assurance that after we started on the first time, there was gonna be some sort of a consideration, uh, for a special use. And with all of the communication we had with, you know, members that have called us, seemed as if to say we were heading in the right, in the right direction. Us being here today was, uh, something that we thought was gonna be in an affirmative to have our senator stand.
Again, sir, talk to Commissioner Davis, talk to Ms. Span, and hopefully they can get you some additional information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item is I, um, BOC two zero zero one, dash zero zero thirty-eight, to allow new billboard to replace existing.
The Alaska Cape Town Partners LLC on behalf of the Forest Bulldog LLC is requesting a conditional use permit for a new billboard. The new billboard will replace an existing wood bill, wood billboard located near Highway forty-one and Highway nineteen forty-one fork. The subject property consists of zero point five two acres and is currently zoned OD Hotel in the O'Dixie overlay district. Subject property, parcel ID number is indicated on your agenda. Staff is entering, entering today a change recommendation to requesting that this request be tabled. Staff is doing some investigation into the overlay district requirements. The overlay district requirements, it's not clear whether or not the intent is to, uh, to address billboards as a permitted use, uh, which is a little, which is somewhat in conflict with what's required in the sign code, so staff recommendation is that this request be tabled in order that we can explore what the, the intent of the overlay district as it relates to billboards. The zoning advisory group recommendation was for approval conditional.
And so, you're, you're recommending that you table it?
Yes, sir, our recommendation from staff is that it be tabled.
And so, where is, is the applicant here? Is the applicant here? Did the applicant send you any email, letter, or anything like that?
No, it, it's not. And all indications was that the applicant would be here. I did leave a message, a message for the applicant that we did have a change recommendation, but I have not had any communications as to what is, uh, whether he was gonna be in attendance or not.
So, we don't have approval from them that they were in agreeance to table the item?
No, I do not have an agreement from them at, for this cycle.
Can I, can I still make the motion to table it though?
Without them, without their approval?
If they, if they're not here, the alternative would be to deny it.
Correct.
So, you are basically giving them a chance to come back.
Correct, giving staff the opportunity to do their research and make sure we make a informed decision.
Correct.
Put my mask on.
Go ahead, what do you wanna do, Commissioner?
I move that we table, that we table, uh, what's the item here? I can't even see.
Thirty-eight, zero zero thirty-eight.
Item I.
Oh. Oh, yeah. I moved that we table, uh, two zero zero one, dash zero zero three eight until the, to the June, uh-
What's, what's that date?
June fifteen.
To the June fifteenth zone meeting.
All right, that's the motion, I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item is K, BOC two zero zero one, zero zero thirty-nine, to allow a convenience store.
Which item is that, Madam Clerk?
The other one was the one that she did with the first couple that was here.
Correct.
Okay, so they weren't right behind him one another, okay, I'm with you.
Case, case number BOC 2001-0039, the applicant Aziza Samani, on the behalf of RJSV Investments, is requesting a conditional use permit for a convenience store with an existing shopping plaza located at 974 Highway 138. The subject property consists of 0.81 acres of land, is owned general business. The property has approximately 291 feet of frontage on Highway 138, and 104 feet of frontage along Tara Road. Staff recommendation is for approval conditional, zoning advisory group recommendation is for approval conditional. Staff has three conditions recommended with this, with the approval.
Is the applicant here? Please come forward. Please state your name, and how many minutes would you like to reserve? Three minutes, okay? Alright, please proceed.
My name is Aziza Samani, I live in Union, Georgia, in Covita County. And this place that we are trying to open is for convenience store, for the benefits of our neighbors, because there's nothing in the close by destination, like no Kroger, no Walmart. So, we wanted to help them, and generate some revenue for our city.
Okay, and this, my name is Ubert Samani, and I live in Union, Georgia, I'm her husband. And I have experience for this gas station for almost like 20 years. And I know how to run the business and, you know, revenue some for, for city. So, I really appreciate if you can approve and give us some chance, so, we can just generate some more, you know, revenue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in favor of this applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of it? Anybody like to speak in opposition to it? Any opposition? Commissioner Davis?
I do have a question, you just said the word gas station, and this is-
It's not a gas station, it's just a, it's just a convenience store.
Okay, because I know there is a Kroger's roughly about a half mile walking distance from there, there's no Walmart in that area, though.
Is, is coming Walmart?
There is no Walmart, there is a Kroger-
Okay.
In about a half mile-
Okay.
As well as some other stores.
Right.
One of the issues I have with it is that, outside the back door there is extremely small. And even to put a dumpster back there, that we've had notor, it's been notorious for dumping grounds. What are you going to do to help us maintain that area?
We already talked to the landlord, and he says he's gonna be, he's gonna be adding some more trash dumpster over there, and he's gonna put some more lights outside, too. And we already told him to, you know, we need some kind of parking space, they can paint it some, the parking spot, and he, he willing to do it, he already sent me the email. He said, once you approve, just let me know, and I can help you out.
What was that, what was in that location prior to?
It's, this is a convenience store right now, it's called the Welcome Food Mart.
And you, oh, and yours, oh, yours is-
Mine's gonna be the same, same name.
Same name?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. At this point, I move that we go ahead and approve what the conditions are stated.
What are the conditions, Ms. Spann?
The conditions, the convenience store shall be limited to the suite that, that's under application, Suite 990. There should, condition number two states no outside sales or vending machines are allowed on the site. Condition number three states provided enclosed dumpster area with an opaque screening of the, of the trash receptacle.
Do you accept it?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask a question, and can we add another one about, excuse me, a condition as far as adult material and vape materials being sold in there as well?
I'm sorry, what material?
Adult and vaping as well.
We can state that no adult novities?
Adult novities and paraphernalia.
And vaping paraphernalia be sold within the convenience store?
You got a concern about that?
We've got a school that is located not far from there. We've got an elementary school located in the south down at Jonesboro. We've got Tara Stadium up there as well, so, that area has a lot of young folk around there.
Just, just have to be, you know, careful about First Amendment and other constitutional provisions. If they're okay with it, then, you know, if they're, if they're okay with that, then I think-
If you're willing to do it.
Right.
I don't know if we can legislate it, but if you're willing to do that, that would-
Okay, I have a question, like you mentioned about novelty items, so, what kind of novelty items? They got so many novelty items in there-
I'm sorry?
That you mentioned about the novelty item? There's so many, not to sell the novelty item, but there's so many items in there, and novelty items like, you know, vapes or something like that, you know, so, is all that comes is in novelty items, so, we don't know. So, can you just mention a bit in detail, so?
Well, a lot of the vaping, vaping products throughout a lot of the other cities and states have been pulled from the shelves for health reasons to young folk.
Okay.
And that's what we want to begin to look at, the flavored, what are they, the E-cigs or whatever they're called, that are, that have been shown that they are market, their market efforts are geared towards young folk.
Yeah.
And we want to basically try to keep that out of Clayton County here, we've got enough that goes on.
Yeah, but still, we can sell tobacco, right, the cigarettes and copanica and stuff like that.
Yes.
Okay.
So, there will be no vaping, no vaping paraphernalia or vaping product?
Is that what you're agreeing to, sir?
Yes, sir.
Re, restate your, your, your motion, please.
And also, just to be clear, are they agreeing to the no adult paraphernalia?
They agree to that first, yeah.
You're talking about them-
So-
In the magazines, right? Restate your motion, and then Madeline do the conditions.
I move that we approve 2001-0039 with the conditions as stated, plus the, an additional condition for no vaping products and no adult literature and paraphernalia.
Alright, is there a second? I'm gonna suck in the motion, any questions?
I just have one statement. I think we've got quite a bit of convenience stores in Clayton County, although it may seem convenient to have a convenience store at this location. But also, I'm concerned because a lot of times behind the convenience store or gas stations, that's where we're spending a lot of our time picking up items. So, if this was to go forward, I think that it would just be a recommendation that they consider to put a camera in the back to help us help them keep the place clean. Because I don't think a lot of people understand that the cleanliness of their business is their responsibility. And so, we get the calls when we have to have code enforcement go out, because the business owner actually is particular. So, that's my statement.
And Commissioner Warner, I agree with your concerns. I drove by there today, and even though it is small, there is a camera, I believe that was placed out there. Now, I can't tell you whether it's a dummy camera or an operating camera, but there's a camera that was placed out there.
Any other statements, comments? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Who is the nay?
Felicia Franklin Warner.
You're clear, Madam Clerk? Okay, 41 it passes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is BOC 2002-0043, to allow expansion of existing quarry.
Case number BOC 2002-0043, the applicant Florida Rock Industries, Inc., on behalf of Rockland LLC, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of an existing mineral extraction and processing facility. The subject property is currently zoned heavy industrial, located at 5698 Highway 85. The subject property consists of 61 acres. The property has 1,952 feet of frontage on Highway 85. Staff recommendations and ZAG recommendations are for approval conditional. There are two related cases for expansion on two parcels adjacent to the existing quarry.
Alright, is the applicant present? Please come forward. Commissioner Hamburg?
No, I thought it was withdrawn, they can go on.
Good evening, Chairman, Clay Massey from Florida Rock Industries, the applicant. I do have a procedural question that might save us some time tonight. But after discussion with Chairman, Commissioner Hamburg, obviously this relates to the quarry activity and expansion of it. She had wanted to have further discussions and an understanding concerning periodic regulated blasting activity for mineral extraction at the quarry. And so, procedurally my question is, if, if I'm agreeable to table this for that understanding and discussion to happen, can, can we move to that now? Or do I need to make the presentation, which I'm happy to do?
If you're in agreeance to table it, and Commissioner Hamburg is good with it, then we'll just take a motion to table till June 15th meeting.
Great, well, then that's what I would request, just to save us time.
Commissioner Hamburg, you have motion for us?
Uh, yes, I move that we table.
It's three parts to this, correct?
Two, two parts.
I know it's two parts. Table both parts of this.
The first one sounded was Agenda Item L.
And Agenda Item, yeah, L and M.
That's correct. I haven't, I haven't sounded M yet, though, but-
You haven't what?
I haven't sounded M into the record.
Okay. Go ahead, and let's do M, and she can make a motion to table the both, both of them together, and we'll take my motion on. Thank you, Chair.
The related case is BOC 2002-0044, the applicant Florida Rock Industries, on behalf of Rockland LLC, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a small expansion of the existing mineral extraction and processing facility. The subject property is currently zoned HI heavy industrial, located at 300 Leaves Mill Road. The subject property consists of nine acres with frontage on Leaves Mill Road.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Uh, yes, I move that-
I'm sorry, Commissioner, hold on a second.
Before, before you make the motion, Commissioner, just want to make sure the applicant is willing to state on the record that he's tabling this one as well.
That's, that's correct, the applicant is tabling this, this application as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hamburg, go ahead.
Okay, I move that we table L and M regarding the expansion and of the existing quarry on Highway 85. The applicant is Florida Rock Industries.
And you want-
L and M.
And you want to table it till when? June, June 15th is our next zoning here?
But June 15th, 2020.
Okay, great. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Probably moving second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
The next item is N, which is MAP 2003-002, Board of Commissioners initiate rezoning of five parcels.
Case number MAP 2003-0002, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners is requesting the rezoning of five parcels of land located within District 4, running incorporated Clayton County. The requested rezonings include properties at the addresses of 709 Middlebrook Drive, 692 Central Avenue, 700 Central Avenue, and 716 Central Avenue. To, the request is to rezone these properties from mixed-use zoning to RS110, single-family residential. The fifth parcel to be rezoned is the rezoning of 514 Valley Hill Road. This parcel's been requested for rezoning from RS110 to agriculture. That's a total of five parcels in District 4. This is to correct some, some MAP errors and to bring some existing residential properties that are currently in mixed-use zoning, but they are currently being utilized for residential, and property owners have indicated that their intent is to upgrade those properties and to maintain the residential character of those properties as they exist in that area now. Staff recommendation would be for approval.
Alright, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve, as read.
I'll suck in the motion, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item is Resolution 2020-87, a resolution to initiate rezoning of certain parcels in Mountain View District to INDP, to initiate a MAP amendment to reflect the rezoning of these parcels.
Uh, yes, I have Resolution 2020-87, which is a resolution to initiate rezoning of certain parcels in the Mountain View District to INDP, to initiate a MAP amendment to reflect the rezoning of these parcels to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes. This does not require a public hearing.
No, just a vote, a motion rather, I'd make a motion to approve the initiation of a MAP amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Okay, I'd like to be sure, make sure that this only covers that back portion of Mountain View, not the frontage, you know, where the airplane used to sit? Because I believe economic development has plans for that, future plans for that area.
Madeline?
Yes, Commissioner Hamburg, it does, it covers the back portion of the existing overlay, Mountain View overlay district. The area that's referred to is the Gilbert Road area. That's the area that's been slated for creating an industrial park district. The boundary maps that will be coming before you, so that it'll be clear how the Mountain View overlay area will be split between the overlay district and the industrial park district. This request tonight is just a night to initiate that MAP amendment, and then we'll bring forth the, the map with the identified parcels.
Just want to make sure we leave the front part open, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we are definitely all in agreeance with that. Alright, any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And before we go back to Mr. Reed, for the record, I, I know I mentioned a couple of times that next meeting was June 15th, next meeting's actually June 16th.
16th.
So, let the records reflect that, please. Mr. Reed, we need executive session.
Yes, on-
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Mr. Reed, I'm sorry.
Yes, actually, on litigation and personnel.
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session for litigation and personnel, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Alright, Commissioner Davis, second motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Alright, motion to reconvene.
I move.
As Commissioner, who?
Warner.
Franklin Warner.
Franklin Warner, I'll suck in the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, Mr. Reed, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Stanford.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, I bring before you a request from Court Administrator Will Simmons for the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, consideration of approval for additional compensation for Ms. Denise Riley. It's Law Clerk Senior at Superior Court. The current compensation is the grade 27, step 3, total compensation 80,00620. Proposed salary total compensation is grade 2710, at a total compensation of 87,239, at an increased cost of 6,619, that comes in a form of a request from the court administrator.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a motion? Alright, the item fails due to the lack of a motion. I will say this, though, the direction to Ms. Ambles, who is the HR Director, is to bring back to this board a compensation salary chart that we can look at and review in reference to the positions that the courthouse has brought to before this board tonight. in reference to the positions that the courthouse has brought to before this board tonight, so we will be taking another look at it.
Yes, sir, not a problem, and that's in reference to the law clerk positions.
Law clerk positions, thank you.
Okay.
Any other business for the board? All right, see?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, did I overstep?
Commissioner Franklin Warner, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to form the privilege and invite everyone to join us once again for our Clayton Exiles Town Hall meeting, which takes place on June fourth at six P. Um, I am taking this moment of privilege because it is a little different considering the fact that we won't be able to meet at social distance, and I want to invite everyone to sign up, you can find us on social media, or you can look at those beautiful signs on the side of the road that has the email address to districtthree@claytoncounty.gov, thanks to my amazing aide, please email us or give us a call. Again, I look forward to having everybody join us on June fourth, and that's at six P, which is a different time, and it's gonna be virtually, so it's important for you to look at those signs, so you'll know how to connect with us, or you can go through social media.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I know this is somewhat repetitive, and I've been, you know, under quarantine like so many folks for a long time, but I do want to compliment you, COO, Mr. Stanford, especially Chief Murkell in the Health Department, you know, as Dr. Beasley said in his live meeting last week, we, Clayton County, was at the forefront of attacking this COVID-nineteen, and, you know, while we don't want anybody to feel like it's over, we still want them to practice all the social distancing when necessary, wear your mask, but we were, when you look at our county, which is majority African-American, and we know how this disease has attacked people more than anyone else, we were a prime target for this, and the organization and just the leadership and everything was just wonderful as we have been dealing with this over the past month, and Dr. Beasley made mention of that in his live Facebook last week, that we were at the forefront, and I, I just really wish people could see that, that just worked, and again, I just wanted to take this time to really just give kudos where it's due, and we attacked this thing, and we, I think we are successful, I think it's important that we keep reminding people about social distancing, I know a lot of people still think it's over, it's not over, and we still got to be very, very careful, but so far we've been doing great. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments, Commissioner Gregory, and you are absolutely right, staff was prepared, they went out there, they got the job done, they're continuing to get it done, and by no stretch of the imagination is this virus over with. Shelter in place might be lifted, a state of emergency may be soon lifted, but we as people should not let a piece of paper legislate to us whether or not stay at home, we still need to be cautious, we need to stay at home, we need to still continue to practice social distancing as well as safe hygiene practices, so you are absolutely right, and my hat is off to those who are doing the real hard work out there each and every day, our public safety people, EMS, police, fire, sheriff, everybody's doing tremendous job, so thank you for those comments.
Today is Public Safety Week, for police officers, too, so...
Oh, great, great, great. All right, anything else? All right, did I ask for a motion to adjourn? If not, a motion to adjourn, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
Second?
All right, second by Commissioner Gregory, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
It was Warner, though, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, it's kind of hard to tell up here, but thank you for that. All right, so we are adjourned, everybody be safe and God bless.
Everybody be safe.